Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the latest episode of Franklin Square Forward. My name is Katie Terraccio. I'm a member of the Franklin Square Civic Association, and I've been asked to moderate this evening's presentation. We want to thank the Platteuich once again for hosting us and providing us with some refreshment. So, thank you very much to the Platteuich. And so this evening, we have a very short presentation of stuff that the Franklin Square Forward Committee's been working on, and then we're going to move on to the Franklin Theater Project. Okay. So first, I wanted to clarify the two groups, because I know there's a lot of discussion in the community and sometimes on social media. Is Franklin Square Forward and Franklin Theater Project the same group? And the short answer is no. They do have a lot of people in common, as do a lot of the groups and organizations in Franklin Square. But Franklin Square Forward is really an ad hoc committee of community members that get together to research ways to encourage and foster revitalization in downtown Franklin Square. At its inception, when the couple of community members got together, we tried to invite every organization we could think of, which was the Chamber of Commerce, the Community League, the Civic Association, the Historical Society, but of course, anybody else who kind of expressed interest in this, we also invited. Some of those people have hung around. Some of them have sort of dropped off. At the previous meeting, we got a very gracious offer of help from the Chamber of Commerce. So we know they're, you know, positive about this and looking to work together. And that's really what this group is and has become. So Franklin Square Forward isn't necessarily a group of action, but more a group that behaves more like a forum of people getting together to sort of bounce ideas off of one another and then take those back to the organizations that already exist in Franklin Square and already do a lot of great work and sort of disseminate that information. So then we have the Franklin Theater Project, which is a separate group of people led by Darren in the back, and they're working on revitalizing and reopening the Franklin Theater. So we're going to hear from them a little bit later. Bill Youngford would like me to tell you that he secured a room at John Street School for April 9th, which is a Wednesday, and it's going to be from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the small gym. And it's going to be an opportunity for people to come and work on some of these projects that we have going and volunteer. Sort of like for committees, but it's a more intimate space, and then there won't be a presentation. It'll just be people getting together to discuss some of these projects. Okay. So moving on. So we all know it's not easy to make change in a community. There's... I know people have approached me, asking me what exactly this is going on. I know we all see a lot of stuff on social media, which is kind of a dumpster fire anyway you look at it. But I just want to urge everybody to really go to the source. If you see something referencing this group or a group involved in it, go to the website, submit a question, and ask, because people have been sending me posts by other people in the community calling certain projects fishy and being very sort of openly disparaging things that groups are doing. And quite honestly, we've never even really met these people in person. They've never approached us. They've never come to a meeting. And we're not quite sure where they're getting their information from. But really, if you want to know what we're up to and what we're doing, come to the meetings, email any of us. There's a website. I know John has put together a contact form. Go to the source. That's always the best way to do things and to get your information. Okay. Yeah, so I think at that point, we're going to move on. I want to offer you a correction from last meeting. We were told at some point, at some juncture, that it was no longer possible to incorporate villages in Franklin Square, in Franklin Square, on Long Island or in Nassau County. And that is not the case. According to New York State, you can still incorporate. The last attempt in Franklin Square, I think, was in the 70s, but it wasn't a popular idea because obviously it would raise taxes. I also want to clarify that it's not something that this group is looking at at all in any way, shape, or form. Most of the projects that people have proposed to us have to do with cleaning up the town, streetscaping, historic preservation, things that don't necessarily cost anything, but that do require a little bit of, you know, man and woman power and a little bit of support from our municipality, which we know is sometimes difficult to get. Bill has sought to get a meeting with the Town of Hempstead several times. They still have not offered to schedule anything with us. And I think what we really want to express to them is that we already have interested parties in Franklin Square who want to do work, who want to look for grants, who want to go out and do things. We just need a little sort of municipal support. So we're not looking for any money from the Town of Hempstead for these projects, but we are looking for their support in organizing them and getting them to move forward, really. And it really would just be a benefit for them, because what makes our town look better or our village look better makes the town look better. Okay. So the first part of our presentation is Franklin Square Forward, and these are sort of our committee projects. We have, we've been talking about historic or architectural overlay district possibilities, a town cleanup, town streetscaping. And then someone, Anthony, has done a little bit of research on grants and revitalization that would be available to us. Okay. So this is my part. So what is an overlay district? And it's a geographic zoning district laid on top of another existing zoning district. So this would require the Town of Hempstead's involvement, but it would not really cost them any money. And what it does is implement additional regulations, and it's frequently used to protect sensitive features, to preserve historic buildings, or to promote specific types of development. The reason you would use one is that it fills the gaps where traditional zoning doesn't address specific or complicated local conditions. So it would give us as a community a little bit more control over our built environment and over the changes in development that happen. So what does this exactly mean? It would mean if we did a historic or an architectural overlay district over downtown Franklin Square, it would allow us to protect and recognize our important historic resources, which are our important historic buildings. We do have a couple of landmarks in the Town of Hempstead. And it would create possible regulations on the style of new construction, sensitive variability in the design of awnings or signage, and additional regulations on height or setback of new building. So it would create standards that help to maintain the look and feel of our historic neighborhood, that sort of mid-century vibe that we have, and it would encourage economic growth and development. But in a way, we felt was sensitive to how we as a community want our downtown to look. So it's not looking to stop development or to stop buildings or to stop new businesses. It's just really to moderate how those things would maybe look. So I don't know if any of you have ever been out to the Hamptons, but they have a really nice-looking McDonald's out there because they have very specific regulations over how those types of buildings can look. You know, it would do with signage and lighting, that sort of stuff. The Town of Hempstead already has a couple of zoning overlay districts. One of them is the Levittown Planned Residence District. So there's an unincorporated area of Levittown that has its own zoning codes, which, within the town ordinances of the Town of Hempstead. And it protects the integrity of the plan of the original Levittown, and it protects lots that would become subdivided or subject to further subdivision under existing zoning provisions. So it keeps Levittown in its sort of historic setting. And Baldwin also, this was another recent one, but that was a big project for the Downtown Revitalization Initiative that came down from Albany. And it's a transit-oriented development district, and it's a mixed-use overlay zone. So these are things that the town can do if the community wanted to do them and wants to support them. Next, I'm going to ask Anthony to come up. He did a lot of research about streetscaping. There was lots of information for that at our first meeting. And so he's going to come up and talk about some of the research he did.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Passarella. I'm an executive director on the Franklin Square Civic Association, born and raised in Franklin Square. And mostly, I've come to be part of this group because I'll be in the town and walk the streets and think, you know, why aren't there more trees? There could be improvements, imagining new potential. New potential for beautification, streetscaping. So especially when you go, like, whatever town, like, think of your favorite town to go out for dinner, to go for a nice walk, things like that. It could be somewhere on the North Shore. It could be Garn City, Seventh Street, things like that. Those kinds of examples are basically the premise of what you're trying to recreate in our town. Doesn't have to be copying. It could be our own vision. And the importance of that is to attract our own community, attract customers, and attract better businesses. And the current businesses to thrive and flourish. So, yeah, and even as well, like, the youth spending time in town, not needing to go and move out to other neighborhood states even. Anyway, to discuss what's on this slide, we have a streetscaping committee that will be meeting on the same day as all the other committees coming up. And I think this does have the potential to take action in terms of... One main thing is tree planting, so we're working towards providing more affordable trees in the future, or eventually free trees, making it easier. Currently, if you want to plant a tree in front of your house in the curb strip, you need a permit, things like that. Where I think a lot of people are busy or don't have the time to read through the Town of Hempstead's website, or they just don't want to spend $500 on a tree, things like that. So basically, the idea that we have is to streamline that process and try to restore the amount of trees that there were in the past. And I'll get to that in the next slide as well. So some other examples of beautification are plantings, planters, flowers, shrubs. So kind of just balancing out the urban landscape, like, the amount of concrete that we're looking at every day, balance that out with greenery and flowers and things like that, but especially that don't necessarily need to be watered as much. So strategically doing that, so you don't have to keep redoing it every year. Once it's planted, you don't want it to not have to, you know, things could die. But you don't really need to replant it if you're smart about it. You can put things in place that can continue over time. Some other things that we're working on are... Particularly right now, we're focusing on Hempstead Turnpike in support of the theater and the downtown revitalization, since it's probably the largest road that goes through the town. It, you know, at least in my opinion, the impression that people visiting or driving through the town, they see Hempstead Turnpike. So improving things like street signs, broken curbs, cleaning the streets, graffiti removal. So the Town of Hempstead does have services on their website where you can report if you see, like, a parking sign with this graffiti that's, like, totally faded on Hempstead Turnpike. You can ask them to get that replaced. I apologize. On Hempstead Turnpike, that's the Department of Transportation. But anywhere else in town, Town of Hempstead can replace those things. So with that said, I personally believe these small things, the same way like breaking a broken window, no, fixing a broken window or small changes can change the direction and the tide and the culture and the energy of the town, where it's like some comes through, or someone even just passing by. They take the bus through Franklin Square. They see, like, oh, these people, they care about their town. And if I do something derelict or whatever, then someone's going to address that and not ignore it. Or that's just one way of looking at it. Let's see, what else? Other visions that we have, you know, one place I love going is, like, downtown Huntington Village, but other places are similar, where at night, things are well-lit. They feel safe when you're walking down the street. Like, if you're walking alone, it doesn't necessarily feel like you have to be concerned. So that's another goal, is to ideally work with business owners and also working on getting grants to do downtown revitalization of storefronts, more lighting, things like that. And there's many other ideas. But another main one, I think, for Hempstead Turnpike is making it more pedestrian-friendly. So it is technically and literally a highway. So crossing that, and at least in the past, for sure, it was like the most deadly street in the state or something like that. So another vision would be to request the state and county to expand wider crosswalks so it's easier and more convenient for people to cross the street if they're able to... If they're like not... I don't know, maybe not everyone feels this way, but if you feel like stressed out, hectic, and it's like a chaotic environment, you might not want to go, like, hang out in that area or shop in there. So but if it's more comfortable to get around, then all of those things can add up to make you feel like you enjoy being in that place. Let's see, what else? And so I emphasize Hempstead Turnpike, but we're also looking at Franklin Avenue, Dogwood, and New Hyde Park Road. Franklin Avenue and New Hyde Park Road are county roads, so the county is usually more responsive. So there's potential there as well. Yeah. And yeah, if anyone has their own ideas or if you disagree, feel free to come to the subcommittee and, you know, propose or change whatever I've said. But I think there's a lot of potential here if you're a business owner or if you know a business owner or if just, you know, you're accustomed to love to certain business. You can advocate for putting things in place to make it more appealing for people in the community to be in those places. The next part is just a quote from Abraham Lincoln, is that "I like to see a man proud of the place in which he lives." I like to see a man live so that his place will be proud of him. It's actually a quote I saw in downtown Stony Brook during college, and I thought that was inspiring because I saw how well taken care of that area was and beautiful their, like, little shopping area was. But it also speaks to the fact that I believe Franklin Square is a very patriotic town. You know, and that takes many forms in terms of supporting police officers, fire department, community service. But I think, and I'm sorry, and also just, but national patriotism, it's the easiest or most practical is to apply it to the place that you live, I believe. So, you know, love of country being love of town, love of your own community. It's much easier to influence those things than what we, you know, see on television, where it's like everything we're told is going crazy. But in your own daily life, when you look outside, things are pretty calm, and you can influence those things. So this slide is just, it's just a screenshot of a Facebook poll that I had posted in one of the more popular Facebook groups for the town. And it was just asking people in general, would they like to see more trees? And about 136 plus 18, whatever, people said yes or definitely yes. So that's 88% of people that responded. So, and some people, you know, maybe might not want it on their house, but they would like to see it in general. Oh, how do I go back? Okay. That's also to acknowledge, like, I know there are concerns about trees as well. If they get too big, it's a disrupt crosswalks, things like that. There are smaller trees. There's a lot of smart things you could do to prevent that if you plant ahead. So let's see. So there's a lot of reasons to plant trees, but in my view, beautification is a major, important thing. Also, if you have children, you live in the suburbs, you want them to experience the balance. Like, we live near Manhattan, which is great, but I think part of being in the suburbs is that, you know, letting your children experience nature and things like that. Obviously, there's other things, too. A lot of the time, you might not notice in your day-to-day experience, it might be like thinking about a tree, but the general experience, kind of subconsciously, it affects how you feel in your town. But there are, like, other practical benefits, shading, cooling, saving money on air conditioning, air quality, environmental restoration. Things like if there's ever storms, flooding, all of these things can absorb flooded water. And also, I don't know if everyone would necessarily feel this way, but there is, I think, definitely a correlation. Towns in general, but particularly on the North Shore, like, if you go to elite, wealthy neighborhoods, like, you're in the woods, sort of. I think there's a correlation between that beauty and quality of life, affluence. And I think our community does have a lot of wealth. So I think it just makes sense to have trees as well. Hope that made sense. So... So anyway, at this point, we're working to make it easier for people to get trees planted through our subcommittee and the civic associations and others. But right now, you know, just if anyone's interested, you can easily just call the landscaper. You can call Town of Hempstead if you wanted to, to have them plant one. You can request a permit to plant one yourself. And in the future, we'll be announcing opportunities to, for us to help you more directly. An example, our close neighbor, Garn City, they estimate having 16,000 trees. Franklin Square has about 31,000 residents. So roughly, if, like, half of all the residents planted with a single tree, then suddenly Franklin Square would look more like Garn City. But I know that depends on your taste, if you want it to be that way. Let's see what else. So just quickly to wrap up, another aspect or vision we have is artistic public murals. I also think Franklin Square is a very creative town. There's a lot of tradespeople. There's a lot of craftsmen that are excellent at what they do. And I think revisioning and rebranding the town and the image of the town in relation to that craftsmanship and art makes sense. And a lot of, you know, popular downtown areas, they'll have murals painted on the side of certain businesses. This is just, this is not real, sorry. But, you know, it could be related to the business. So this is on the side of, like, the bakery on Hempstead Turnpike, where it simultaneously advertises, like, hey, there's a bakery, but it also makes it more pleasant to see. Yeah. And just something to note up top, in the future, I'll probably share, like, with Hempstead Turnpike, there actually is a lot of parking on that street or behind all the shops, but it doesn't feel that way, and they're kind of hidden, in my experience. Or I know even people who live here, like, they'll be driving. Franklin, Hempstead Turnpike is so busy that you can forget that there are places to park, but you might not feel like walking that far to go to, like, to the regular store. So working towards reaching out to Town of Hempstead to get, like, more signs pointing out, like, hey, there's parking over here. For example, behind Taco Bell all the way to, I believe, Citibank, like, all of that is municipal lot. All of that is public and free. And then there's others, like, behind the OTB and on the other side, there's huge parking lots. But when you're driving through, you see just, like, some, a few spots on the side of the road, and you're like, you know, really, you might not want to stop. So just to speak on grants in general, is it AARP here? Okay. So I don't want to go on too long, but there are a lot of grants that we found. There are town nonprofits, like the civic associations, Franklin Square Community League, Historical Society. All of these organizations can directly apply to these grants through certain corporations. And it's basically, you know, funding, and a lot of what's popular nowadays is a lot of corporations, like Lowe's, for example. They're interested in supporting community development and downtown revitalization. So is the state, so is Housing and Urban Development, Federal Agency. So there's a lot of opportunities that I think can give us hope. So not only is it volunteer work, things like that, but once there's funding, it makes, it can make it a lot easier for a difference. The one that we recently applied to already, and we're waiting to hear back sometime in May, but definitely by June, is through AARP. We applied for a grant of $17,200 for garbage cans on Hempstead Turnpike. So hopefully, that goes through, but even if it doesn't, there's a lot of other opportunities. A lot of the grant writing, or you have to read a lot, there's weird technicalities for these simple things. With new technology like ChatGPT and artificial intelligence, you can more easily apply to those kinds of programs. That's an example, like, basically, commercial trash cans for the side of the street. There's a lot of trash that accumulates. And, yeah, if it's approved, then we would work with either the state or Town of Hempstead to hopefully have them installed, like, drilled in the ground so they can't be vandalized, knocked over. A lot of the ones that are currently there, they're open on top. They can, they're not always, they could be overflowing, things like that. But, yeah, so the grant would be for about 20 of them, ranging from roughly, like, where Vita Coffee is to, I guess, around here, Platteuich, to just kind of disperse them down the street. If it is approved, then we would have until the end of the year to complete that. And also, thank you to the Historical Society for allowing us to apply for that grant through them. And so that's everything I have to share. If anyone has questions later on, feel free to ask.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me good?
You're on.
Yeah, good. Okay. Thank you for coming out tonight and checking out the revitalization that we're trying to do to Franklin Square, clean it up, make it look beautiful again. I'm working on the Franklin Square Theater. We were, I ended up joining the Civic Association and meeting more people. I had this original plan that we were working on. So the biggest question right now with the theater is everyone's asking about the nonprofit organization and why we don't have it set up, both because we don't own it yet. We're not going to have a nonprofit until we own it. It doesn't take long to set up a nonprofit, but again, we have to own it first, and then we get everything in the progress. We could, some people are asking, why are you doing a nonprofit and not just be a regular business? Because if we have it set up as a business, we won't be able to accept grants if we do need grants. And I think at this point, we're going to need some grants to get it off the ground. And if we, let's say, if it's not making any money, we want to have grants to help keep it operating. But from the numbers that we have, it should be doing very well for itself and be able to give back to the community. So if you want to move on, we could go to the work that has to be done in that place. So the work has to be done, because the immediate is fix the roof, because there's huge leaks in the roof. And I was up there not too long ago and fixed some of the holes to try to keep it from continuing to deteriorate. But there's a demo of the upstairs projection room. There's new sinks in the bathrooms. Handicap lift has to be put in to bring up the code. We have to remove the upstairs seating and create new seating, which now, speaking to a gentleman about a movie theater, we may end up leaving the seating. So some of the stuff that we're proposing to do, we may end up changing, because, again, we don't even have everything in motion yet. So everything is just an idea and a concept. The whole thing is that we want to do is to get the awareness of the town and the support from the town. Because if we're going to get investors, we need to have the town's support. So moving on, we have to add a new staircase, open up a wall in the lobby. I'm going to add a glass window, because we're going to have workshops on the left. We're going to add a bathroom on the main floor. We have to level it. We're going to add a bathroom on the main floor. We have to level the floors on some of the theaters. Remove walls in the main theater and turn the electric back on and fix up the concession stand. And we're going to end up utilizing the front lobby as more like a WeWork. So when you go in, you could really utilize the front lobby, the workshop, the concession stand without having to go into the rest of the theater. So we're planning on leaving this place open from like eleven to eleven. So it'll be all day open. So if you move next one. So this is the, this is the floor plan that we have right now. The one is the existing conditions and then what we proposed for the floor plan. So now if you look, everything's pretty much opened up. The seating is no longer there because we've got to level the floors because we're going to use it as an event space in the main area, workshops to the left. And like I said, utilize that whole front area as like a WeWork that could be utilized for, more for families, moms, like mommy and me sessions. Because we have a lot more kids in this neighborhood, more than teenagers. We have more younger generations starting. So something like this kind of facility is great for the town because these kids are going to start going there as kids and then grow up with this in their life, you know, with a place to go. And hopefully this will have a trickle effect to the rest of the neighborhood as we start, you know, building and cleaning up everything. So the upstairs theater, we would love to be able to still show movies. Because attendance is low on movies, we're not using a bigger theaters, even though we're going to keep a screen in the downstairs theater. But we're going to be showing not first run movies, but more retro movies, stuff that are older. People are coming out for that more so than the newer movies. They're just not, people aren't showing up for new movies. You go to a movie theater these days, there's like ten people in the movie. You go to a movie where they're showing a retro film, you got thirty, forty, fifty, even, even more. So we're constantly changing the concept a little bit. We're tweaking it as we go along. Again, we do not own the property yet. We're in contract, but we don't own it yet. But we're trying to raise awareness and support from the town because if we're going to get other investors, we need the town's support. They have to see the town saying, hey, we want this. And then if the towns, you know, if they see that the town wants this, they're going to be like, hey, I'll help out. But if they don't see any interest by the town, they're going to be like, well, the town doesn't want it, then why are we going to bother? So I really would love to everybody have a support, even if we put five dollars into the GoFundMe. If we have a lot of people putting a little bit in, doesn't have to have a big number at the end of the day, but it has a lot of people that want to support it. And that's what we're looking for. So you can switch it again. So what you can expect from the theater is we have several activities that we have here that we put down. And so granted, the main space will be a public event rental space. So that will help generate funds. So you have, the main theater will be opened up into the one big theater for larger shows and different events. So we could do comedy, bigger comedy. If there's smaller comedy, we can do it upstairs in the other theaters because they all have stages. So we also are going to be doing workshops in the side theater on the main lobby. We're going to be holiday events that'll bring in a great revenue, arcade games, Maker Space, comedy shows, music shows and lessons, film festivals, bingo nights, because someone asked us about bingo nights. And still we have to be a nonprofit because there are people asked us, can you do bingo there? We can only do it if we're a nonprofit. So nice. Theme photo shoots, a lot of community activities. So we're really interested in making this something that's for the town and it's well rounded. It's not just one thing. It's like, oh, it's a theater and showing movies. It's kind of like, we want it to be all inclusive to, if you go there, there's always something to do at any even time of day. So with, hey, what just happened? All right, change it. I, I don't have my thing now. So, so as you could see, the population of Franklin Square dipped a little bit, but then it's on a steady rise again. So now we have what? Thirty-three thousand people that are living in Franklin Square. Most of these are ki, are like forty-year-old women with kids, which don't have a place to go, you know? The little gym just opened up over in West Hempstead. It's killing it because they need a place to go. There's no more third spaces anymore. So this is what we hope to really fill the need of a town. So you could change. So with the need for the third space in a community is something that we have, we have lost as a community. And even just in general because of social media, but it's starting to come back. The people are seeing the need. It's now becoming a trend. And how the crowdfunding works, it shows other investors that you as a town want this in your town. We're not going to be able to get investors if, if the town's not interested. So we really hope that everybody can just donate a dollar, five dollars. And it's going to be security. There's going to be people there, you know, it's not going to be just free rein. We're definitely going to have security. We're going to have cameras. The arcade is not going to be a big arcade. It's not, we're not doing like a full-on arcade. We're just going to have some games because there are some people that really ask, because I talked to a lot of people in the town and everybody has like, oh, you're going to have this, you're going to have that. And I'm trying to like appease all everybody. So everyone has something there that's, that's theirs, you know? And if we end up getting access to the basement and turning that into something, that's also a whole, a whole nother thing where we could do and expand on the Maker's Mark, Maker Space. And we would really like it to have use for local talent because it's a smaller theater. It, it's too small to be a regional theater. So it's better off as a community theater. So then we have new projects, new, new plays that can be put on. And because it's going to have a lot of artists working there, doing either art workshops or this or that. We will probably have the, the, the people to help, you know, put on these shows. And they could be a little more interesting than, than the norm. Who knows? Yes, there's going to be a concession stand downstairs. That's the original concession stand that we're redoing and just making it a little bit more modern. And then upstairs is going to be a cafe that's going to feed those two theaters. So that's like its own entity up there, which is going to be really nice. That's most likely going to be more active in the evenings and on the weekends. In the weekends, we would love to plan to just do kids animations during the day. So it's going to be geared towards, the movies will be geared towards the time of day. We're trying to figure out if we can do quicker turnaround on movies opposed to having them run for weeks. I want to have them just up, you know, they're up for a day, you know, single runs or something like that, which I was talking to this gentleman over here, which does exist. So that's very exciting. Yeah. And we're going to have set programs, a lot of how-to things to do. A lot of different workshops so they can learn a skill, you know, there's, all this stuff is going to be going on. And we, we're all, it'll also be available for someone to rent out the space. If they have their own thing they want to do, they can rent it and do their own thing there. Any other questions? We're good? I'm done? Yes. All right. Listen, all I can say to everybody, please, please show your support. Tell other people. We really need to rally up the people to, to, to support this. We get a lot of naysayers that they, they say that we're doing this all wrong. There's no right way to do this. We're, we're just trying to get this under control. The, the theater back to the community. And it's steps that we have to take, you know, but we're in the right step. We're in contract. We're working on, we have an architect. We're, we're just moving along. All we need to do is just gain the, the support from the community.